Good morning, everybody. It's 10:01 a.m. on November 24, 2020, and I hereby call the meeting of Story County Board Supervisors to order. And would ask if you want to join us with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody. This meeting is originating from the Administration Building. Public access is being provided via Zoom as we have done recently, and that's because of, obviously, the continued need to social distance because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we're doing this consistent with Code Section 21.8.1. So I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Hens.
Aye.
Olsen.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is adopted. Next, updates on COVID-19. Does Steph have any updates they'd like to share with us at the moment? Hearing none. Supervisors, do you have anything? And Supervisor Hens, have you seen? You usually have the latest numbers for us.
Yep. 3,860 new statewide positives and 19 deaths. Story County has 122s positive. And they say there's a record, 143 long-term care facilities reporting outbreaks as well.
What was that number on long-term care?
143 long-term care facilities.
Okay. Obviously, we still have need to wear face coverings, maintain social distancing, and be very careful if we're traveling over Thanksgiving and to limit, to not travel if you can manage, or to basically limit to immediate family. You've heard all of that. It's all very, very important because we are continuing to see these increased numbers. Next, discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with requests for immediate action. Are there any? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go on to agency reports. We haven't listed today. And we'll go on to consideration of minutes. We have minutes from the November 10 general meeting canvas, our election canvas, excuse me, and November 17. I've given some minor corrections to our secretary on the November 17 and shared those with the other supervisors. Is there a motion on the minutes?
I would so move that we approve the November 10 as presented and the November 17 as edited by Supervisor Merkin. Second?
Okay, Olsen?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Adopted. Next is consideration of personnel actions, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the actions as listed.
So moved. Second?
Hens?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions approved. Next is consideration of claims. I would entertain a motion for approval of claims as presented.
So moved. Second?
Olsen?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. Next, we'll go to the consent agenda, and we have several items listed under consent. Are there any that need to be pulled?
No, I don't have anything.
Nope.
None? Okay, then I would entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda items as presented.
So moved. Second?
Olsen?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Okay, we will go on then, and we are on to item 14, public hearing items. 14-1 is second consideration of ordinance number 291, amendments to Chapter 80 floodplain management program. Amelia Sherman, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
And we approve the real quick summary.
Yes, so there's been no new public comments. We're recommending approval on second consideration and waiver of third consideration.
Okay. Board, do you have any questions for Amelia?
I have no additional questions.
Okay. Do you?
No.
If not, then I will open the public hearing. So are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this proposed ordinance that are second reading of it?
Like, star nine?
Yes, either unmute yourself, or raise your hand, or click, or do star nine if you're on the phone. Do you see anybody? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval of ordinance 291 on second consideration.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 291 on second consideration and waive the third consideration.
The third.
Yes.
Second?
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Hens?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. It's adopted, and third is waived. Okay, then we have second consideration of proposed ordinance 287, private sewage disposal systems. Margaret James is on the phone, or on the line, on the Zoom call, whatever we're calling it. You're here, Margaret? And you're muted. Margaret, you want? Okay, you're unmuted now.
Good morning. Thanks for this opportunity to present the second reading. We did not, we received some more comments in addition to those received at the first hearing. Those comments included changing things on Table 2, requiring the engineer's license number, let's see, referencing Chapter 69 for soils descriptions, and, oh, existing systems, should they have to meet non-NPDES general four parameters, or should it be limited to only new systems? Because when they were installed, they did not have that set of requirements. And that's what we received. That was, those new ones were from Jim Carroll, a soils engineer. And then those other ones that we received last time, a lot of them about the requirements for pumping the tank, and then a few from Brian Campbell about setbacks and holding tanks.
So those were all reasonable comments, it sounds like, but you received them after we had our first hearing.
Yes. Yes. Although those two, go ahead.
I was going to ask about the Jim Carroll ones because we'd invited, he'd already submitted those, correct, to us? Because I remember we saw those in writing. And Brian Campbell is the one who we invited to stand in on some of the technical aspects there, okay? Were you, did you feel there was anything that Brian Campbell especially had pointed out that rose to the level of us needing to change those numbers? The numbers in the attachment, the appendix?
A couple things would certainly help. I don't know if they're totally necessary, but they would, you know, they're good ideas to add in. And then I just wanted to say that for Jim Carroll, he wrote a batch of comments before, when we were doing our stakeholders. And then just this week, I received another set of comments from him regarding the new ones that were discussed during the first reading.
Could I make a suggestion? Or just, I just want to share a thought. I know you're going to be working on policies and an implementation plan which help further explain the ordinance. If there's some things in there that you think are good information, can you document them in policy or implementation plan rather than have to start over again with the ordinance? I mean, they're not contradictory, it's just more supplemental information. Is that what you're saying?
Well, some of them are actually require an alarm for holding tanks. That's, that's more of a rule than a policy. Setback change, again, a rule, not a policy. But I don't know how, how extreme the changes have to be to force me to start over with the first public hearing. And I was hoping to get some legal guidance on that.
If I could ask a question, though, that may help us with that is, in these recommendations on like the setback requirements, like take those first, do they make it more stringent or less stringent? Because that would, I think that's going to weigh into whether it has to be republished or not. If it's less stringent, like, you know, so what about it like with the setback requirements?
Right. So he wanted to go, he wanted to strike, strike one of them, but it's already in the DNR requirements, part of it is. And so we cannot strike that because it's, we can't be less stringent. So it would be no change or less stringent on Brian's recommendation.
So I would venture that we would be still with, be good not having to republish, even if we did that?
Supervisor Hens, I want to make sure that you're done.
Yeah, my, my would just be continuing with the other items that, once again, that were suggested be changed that are rules. Do they go for less stringent or more stringent?
Margaret, my question?
The holding tanks one is more stringent. And Jim Carroll's, if we entertain that, even though it was late, that would be less stringent. Any other stuff? Do, 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 valuation? Those are really the only main changes that have impact.
I guess my question is, and I'm not sure if it was with the holding tanks or what you had said in your presentation there, because I didn't get it written down, Margaret. It sounded like there was something that was going to be, was it permitting? That did, that needed to meet the MP, was it the MPDES criteria? Or are there some out there that don't? Is that what you were saying?
So there are certain ones that reach the waters of the state, and they need to read, they need to have an NPDES permit, and they need to meet certain parameters. Then all those other ones that are designed to discharge, they, that don't need an NPDES permit, they still need some kind of watchdog situation. And I, so I was hoping that if we came upon one that was seeming to be at a spec, that we could have them, require them to sample that and then meet certain requirements. And that was Jim Carroll's point, was that they, when they were installed, they were not installed to meet certain requirements. So we can't really enforce that on top of them now. And, and it kind of makes sense. I think he's got a good point.
Does that give, the ordinance that was passed, does that give them, does that kind of grandfather them in? Or do they have to upgrade systems based on how the ordinance?
It kind of grandfathers them in. They were installed, you know, before today. And so therefore, as long as they're discharging and it doesn't, there's no odor to it, and it doesn't look foul, then it would be okay. We could still request that they test so that we get an idea of where they're at, but they wouldn't have to meet those tighter parameters.
Ordinance doesn't specifically grandfather them in, so that would be open to interpretation. Would that be correct?
No, it specifically includes them, the way I read it. So it would have to be changed if we wanted to grandfather them in.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's a significant, I would argue that also. That's a significant change to go in and add that. So my question now has to do with the mechanics of that, what Supervisor Hens already asked about, are they going to have to go in and spend a great deal of money to upgrade? Not, you know, not knowing anything about this type of system, are they going to have to dig up and install additional mechanic, mechanical parts?
Yeah. You know, on the old, on Peats or CoCos, the older, older ones, that's why you test. You learn that, yeah, the media has to be changed out, and, and you determine that by testing. So like on sand filters, if it's really bad, then yes, there would be quite an expense because you don't just replace the sand. You have to, you know, get backhoes in there and pull out the piping, replace the sand. It's a lot more involved than the little packages now that people put in. So just, it's site-specific.
With site-specific after a test? So we're not requiring automatically, we're not requiring anybody who has an older discharge system that doesn't require the permit, okay? We're not automatically requiring them to go in and upgrade their system. It will be at the time that their system might be tested and is found to be failing?
Yes, yes. I think that's a good way to put it. And that could be, that could be specified in policy that I write up.
That, okay. So that without changing that, all right, is the, okay. I'm trying to, yeah. I just, I've torn here about whether, you know, back to what Supervisor Hens said about open to interpretation. Because it sounds like Mr. Carroll read this to hear like everybody who's got one of these older discharging systems that doesn't require a permit might have to go in and upgrade. That's what Mr. Carroll is saying. He thinks it looks like everybody's got to upgrade.
Everybody's got to test and everybody's got to pass. And then, yeah, that's implied that they would have to fix it. Yep.
Okay, well, test and pass. To me, those are two different things. One is everybody's got to do it, which like is the pumping part. But you're saying we've written in there, they have to test and pass. So only those people who are passing are facing the need for having to go in and upgrade, correct?
Failing. Those ones that are failing.
All right, failing, sorry about that.
Okay.
One other question I have is for either you, Margaret, or it might be for my colleagues here. So is it general to pass an ordinance and not have the policy at the same time? Or they've been in the past generally provided together? I think that's where kind of the struggle comes in, is they're not looking at the policy to go with the?
Well, the ordinance is a policy. I think when we're saying policy, like Supervisor Merkin referenced it last week, I think it's more talking about implementation procedures, okay? About procedures versus, but ordinance is a policy, if you will. It's a very strong policy.
Ordinance is a law, the statute.
Well, yeah, but I mean, but as what they do, yeah. Okay, so we're talking about implementation procedures here. And so that's why I'm kind of pushing about, so they have to test first. I just don't want to put on these systems, since we don't say they're grandfathered in, because we want them to test, correct?
Right.
So we don't want to automatically, you know, put it on everybody. But if they've got to test first, which is what we're after, right? It's compliance with, all right, I guess I'm comfortable with it. Stay the way it is.
Okay. And, go ahead.
Margaret, you have some questions into the county attorney, but they haven't had a chance to answer them yet, correct?
Correct.
Let me ask you this. Do you think the ordinance, as we passed it in the first reading, is sufficient to operate with without any of the changes that you had suggested? You could come back later and ask for changes to the ordinance. So here's one, here's what I'm proposing here. Let me explain why. I'm thinking maybe we should pass this. If we pass this on second consideration, we not waive third consideration. That gives you time to get an answer to any outstanding questions you have from the county attorney. And we do have third consideration set for next week, is that correct? So?
Correct, December 1st.
Is it, we, we pass it right now on the second as is, but that gives us a chance on the third reading to hear if the county attorney has any concerns or issues. Is that okay with you, Margaret?
That would be great. Yep, I like that.
I have no other questions for Margaret. I do want to let you know that I was contacted by a plumbing professional, okay? And the comments that this plumbing professional put in is once again about the mandatory five-year pumping across the board, feeling that it should be more targeted toward maybe an inspection first or an assessment, and then to pump, you know, if needed, all right? And the back and forth, a little bit discussing about averages, et cetera, okay? And then the other concern he had was that as we create an implementation schedule that Margaret was going to create, bring back to the Board of Health and to us, is that he was concerned if it was, if it were too aggressive that people, that there are only three basic pumpers in the county, as Margaret had informed us before, and that that might create problems. Yeah, backlog, and also people could, you know, all of a sudden prices could go up. And I do?
We did discuss that at the stakeholders meeting, and we had all, we had two pumpers represented, and they did not anticipate that being a problem. I think the solution is, you know, if it really got crazy, they would buy another pumper truck and, and staff it with another two men, women.
Because I don't believe, now this is just, I'm not on real steady ground here, but I don't believe we have the power to limit someone's pricing of, you know, things, right? That's a state legislature type of thing. So, okay, well, that's good to hear that that was their response at the stakeholders meeting, was no, we'll just have to increase our capacity, and hopefully that would not come with a serious increase in pricing.
Margaret, I have one last question because I did have someone who contacted. And thank you for saying it's the implementation. That's what I was thinking of. The cost for pumping, I know we was, your presentation was like, what, $300, $400 or so?
$260 to $400.
Does that include digging up the yard? Because sometimes you might have to bring it back.
Yeah, and I think the 400 represents that longer time period. I mean, if they spend a day there, yeah, it's going to be way more expensive, but what can you do? But I think the 400 was more, the more man-hours for digging that up, yep.
For digging that up, but that's, yeah, that's why I just want to make sure that it's all inclusive, that it isn't just, you know, pumping it out. It included the machinery and labor.
Yeah, I, I think that it's included. But that, yeah, you're right. The 260 is probably just popping the tops with the, you know, the access all the way to the surface, pumping and driving off. But the, I know one of the, one of the pumpers has a little digger that he hauls behind him on a trailer. So, you know, it's right there and available, so a lot easier than hand digging. Some people opt to dig it their own.
Thank you. I just had, I had the person who contacted me thought it would be much more costly than that for digging up the yard and then that stuff. So that's why I think. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll look into that. I'll call a couple folks and pumpers and see if that includes digging. I'll just double-check that.
Are there any other questions for Margaret? If not, I'll open the public hearing. And again, if there's any members of the public, please use the Zoom raise hand function or unmute yourself or if on a phone, press star nine to unmute yourself. And Leanne, are you seeing any public comments? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval of proposed ordinance 267 on second consideration.
287.
87. Thank you.
So moved.
Second, I'll second. Okay, is there a discussion? Okay, then, Olsen?
Aye.
Hens?
No.
Merkin, aye. Passes on second consideration. And then next will be third consideration. And Margaret, if you would, check with the county attorney again and see what, if, if there's any questions there. Thank you.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you so much.
Item 15, additional items. Discussion and consideration of hiring freeze exemption request for fine recovery and license reinstatement coordinator position. And I also see that we have the item after that is for the assistant to that position as well. We have Tim Meals and Alyssa Wignall.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
So, as you're aware, we have an opening in our fines recovery coordinator position due to Latifah Faisal leaving our office. And so we're asking to fill that position by moving Connie Davis, the Assistant Fines Collection Coordinator, into that position as she's already trained and has the experience to fulfill that role and then fill her position with the new hire. So I'd like to ask the Board to authorize us doing that.
Alyssa, do you have anything?
No, I just want to note that they want to. I just want to note that the documentation, that they'd like to do the promotion early December, so there's, there's a smooth transition into next of the year. And we've done that before.
Okay.
So, and there, I just want to make sure the Board is aware that that is the plan.
And, and the internal promotion is okay? That we don't, that does not require Board approval?
No, you can promote from within and then advertise pretty open. It'll open up the other conditions.
Okay.
And this is not, and the attorney's office is not subject to anything we might want to do?
No, it's not.
Right, so, yeah. So I think the only thing to note here for the public record or for the public is that this program happens to generate revenue. And so I did the math and taking a look at what both the coordinators paid right now and the entire scale from beginning to step 10, also the assistant, beginning to step 10, the revenues anticipated and that have a record in the past more than cover the, these positions too. So yes, they are in the budget, but also the revenue from this program is in the budget also. And I think County Attorney Meals makes a very good point about this is how people who have done, paid their fines, et cetera, get their driver's licenses back. It's part of the, we handle the paperwork for the state, correct, Tim?
That's correct. And this program also brings in restitution for crime victims in addition to revenue for the county to the tune of $116,000 in restitution in FY '19 and $119,000 in restitution for victims in fiscal year '20.
Thank you. I didn't miss that, so anyway, so I'm comfortable, very comfortable with this. Thank you.
Supervisor Hens, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to, to approve the hiring freeze exemption request for the fine recovery and license reinstatement coordinator position.
So moved. Second?
Further discussion? Hearing none, Hens?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. It's approved. Next, we'll go to discussion and consideration of hiring freeze exemption request for fines recovery and reinstatement assistant position. And again, that's being, being requested because of the county attorney's office's plan to move the assistant into the coordinator position. Are there any further questions about this? Now I entertain a motion for approval of the hiring freeze exemption request for the fine recovery and reinstatement assistant position.
Aye, so moved. Second?
Further discussion, hearing none. Olsen?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
We will go on then to item 3, discussion and consideration of survey feedback and proposals from asset agencies impacted by COVID-19. Sandra King, Director of External Operations of County Services. Good morning, Sandra.
Good morning, Board.
I provided some materials for your presentation.
I provided some materials for your consideration, sort of giving you some background about a previous board meeting where the local government relief funds were anticipated and uses for those funds discussed. The Board wanted information from asset agencies regarding challenges they're encountering because of COVID and, you know, what they thought, if they thought additional funding could help them to address those concerns. Only 25% indicated clearly that additional funds could help them address COVID impacts. And I'm bringing forward a couple of proposals for your consideration, one of which is from Raising Readers. They want to transfer funding. This is from an existing allocation. They want to transfer from one service to another because of the reduction in the 55% for when they want to transfer that to out-of-school learning. And then Boys and Girls Club wants to use an alternate method of drawing down funds because they don't think that they would be able to draw down their full allocation because of COVID impacts. And they want to propose a different way of doing that. And then some additional agencies did mention additional funding, however, they did not get specific enough for the Board to consider awarding any additional funds. So if you want, may I go back to those agencies and ask for a proposal?
That was what I anticipated would come forward, more, you know, is that of the 25 that responded, safe funds, okay, that there be more proposals at this point. But I appreciated your, your memo that you point out that you and the asset admin team were very vague with the agencies on purpose because you didn't want them to start expecting more funding, right?
Right. You didn't want to get anybody's hopes up, the Board had not decided how you're going to use those funds, so I didn't want to imply-
So-
-to give out my proposals.
And so that's why I then forwarded the email exchange that I'd had with Jody Stumbo regarding to the, the Bridge home, based upon, we'd had the discussion related to what we were going to do about homeless COVID-positive quarantine, but she did provide a couple pieces of information that indicated that we may have an immediate, we have a, we have a deficit when it may be coming to being able to put homeless people and to bring them off the street over the winter time. So I'm going to ask, you turn it back over to the Board about, I mean, you know, how do you guys want to discuss these two proposals and then, then do you want to go and discuss the situation with the Bridge or maybe other agencies or what do you want to do?
We can't take action on the Bridge because we don't have a proposal in front of us.
I understand that.
We do have proposals from Raising Readers and Boys and Girls Club. First, why don't we do this? Let me, let's ask if we have any questions about either one of those and, and let's, let's, let's resolve those and then if we want to just have some discussion about direction we might give about, about the Bridge, we could do that. So first, are there any questions on Raising Readers? Hearing none, are there any questions on the Boys and Girls Club?
No.
I understand all reasonable requests, but there were-
They're just asking for flexibility and I would agree with you. I think right now with, you know, dealing with COVID, I noticed they were kind of different because one was talking about needing to have more remote things, the other was more on-site, but they found ways that there, it was logical once you read them. So I didn't see inconsistency there. I just saw, not asking for more money, just can we bill a little differently or can we use this source for that? And I, as I said, during a pandemic, I think asking for flexibility within your current budget is certainly-
Well, they're still serving kids.
Exactly.
Yeah, they're still serving them. That's what I look at, to make sure they're still serving them. They're looking at serving them a different way so that they can still draw down the funds. And that's what I look at, is that they weren't making a huge diversion from serving the population that they are serving.
They just have to do it a little differently.
Differentally, right.
I looked at it the same way, you know, is that, yeah, this is really about them still, it's still hands-on. It's still direct service rather than trying to maintain an internal structure or something. It's direct service and it's, yeah, just shifting funds.
So I would entertain a motion to allow flexibility in drawing down and using funds as requested by Raising Readers and Boys and Girls Club.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Hedman.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Adopt. Pardon me. Now, let's talk a little bit about that the Bridge has evidently sent some information to Supervisor Olson, which I believe you did share, but it's not on the agenda today. What, what's our pleasure? Do we want it on the agenda for the next meeting? Do we want some more information from the Bridge? What do we need right now?
Jody Stumbo is on the line if we had, you know, initial questions. And I guess, like I said, I anticipated that we'd be hearing back that any agency who indicated funding would be of use to them, okay? I anticipated that they all would be presenting some kind of, of plan.
Right, that's what wasn't clear. And that's even from some of the other ones, not just the Bridge, but from some other ones that sort of brought up additional funding. It was not clear enough to know, you know, without having a full proposal as to how much, how was it going to be used and so forth. And maybe the asset team may have some additional questions that they may ask that I might not even think of that might be helpful for the Board to consider.
Did you follow up and ask each one of them to present a proposal, Jim?
No.
Yeah, see, that's-
If, if I can finish. They just raised the issue about additional funding. For example, Iowa, they said additional funding would be helpful. However, in their budget paperwork, they requested the same amount as they requested last year. So it, it just wasn't clear. And again, had I gone to them, I may have been raising expectations that, you know, they may not have gotten any additional funding. So that's the way I heard it.
Here's an option. If we would ask Sandra to go back and discuss this with her other asset team, administrative team members and maybe just put together the next step. And the next step could be to say, if you are requesting additional information for yet this fiscal, FY20, this fiscal, to provide some detailed budget information about how much, what percentage of your budget for what sources have you spent so far and what you, and, and why has the spending been higher? And what do you anticipate you need to get through the year? Or if you don't get it, how will you have to revise your services?
So I-
Asking from a deeper dive, in other words.
Yeah, yeah, and I would, I would agree. I'm going to assume that you've had conversations with the asset team on it and just trying to figure out. I know that all the agencies have to do their, their report that's due like November 15 or November 30. So you can see what they've done for those first six months. You will have that information. So that's, that's one thing that would be, be, either do like November 15 or November 30, I can't quite remember. It's your mid, mid, mid-year report is what it is. Yet you don't want to raise expectations that just the county would be doing anything. I guess I'd like to know, are the other entities looking as well? It may be that something needs to come back to the county only, but are they, is the group collectively looking at where the agencies at? Are they able to draw down all their funds? Do they need to look the other way? Are they looking at reducing, significantly reducing services or laying off staff because of, you know, expanded social distance, you know, whatever, not able to meet the needs? And then make some determination from that, you know, with some proposals. So it is kind of taking that bigger dive in there.
So going to the, the first question may not be asking the agencies, but asking the other admin team members, is your, are you as a funder willing to consider additional requests for this year?
So tonight on the City Council Agenda, there are several contract amendments, asset contract. I didn't look at them, their consent, but okay. I guess the other thing that, as you guys have laid out this whole process, I'm looking at the email that Jody Stumbo sent, like I said, it was providing information related to a separate issue, but she's saying there are $100,000 in the hole and there's a risk. They're already, we know they've reduced services, okay? We already know that what we've heard from Jody, that they literally are saying no to some people and some families who need shelter right now. And we have, that's now. And then we're headed into which, like the rent moratoriums, you know, eviction moratoriums are going to end, the, the extra funding for federal for unemployment is already gone, okay? And so there are some resources out there, but where I'm headed with this, get back to point, is some of these services, we're already are not being offered. And, and this scares me when we're talking about, she's already the turning away homeless people or people who are, a families. And then she's saying she might not even have the staff to help deliver meals if somebody's quarantined over at the microtail who's a homeless with testing positive. So your, your process here, while it's all very nice, all right, and go back to this person and have this admin to do this, I think we've got people who aren't being served immediately and I'm concerned that we're going to be backlogged. And I mean, you know, this originally was brought up, was asked for, and now we're, what, three weeks down from now?
That level of detail was not provided in the survey feedback.
I understand that.
I have the board that emailed from you.
I understand that. I got, I'm not, this is not a figure point. This is a, I think some services, we might have to ask for expedited explanation from the provider about who's not really being provided now and what are the immediate risks if, if people don't receive, don't receive that. I'll let you know too, as long as we're on this, okay, the whole, the services, that the demand is exploding at the food pantries. Our last hunger collaboration, you know, that there were 40 families in one month at Salvation Army, MICA is exploding. Now, the issue's a little different there as far as it's not a funding issue right now. United Way still has, I believe, around $40,000 from their, their virtual food drive that they can give to help purchase food. That's not the issue. The issue is labor and being able to get those, the food delivered right to people. The Colonians are stepping up, okay? So that's already in the works there. But there's another immediate need, you know, it's just like I said, we can't address it with funding. So that's my response to, I know you guys want this orderly process and whatever, but I think we've got, do we really understand who's not receiving basic needs services?
Well, I think this is the next step then through asset team and I, there's a lot we don't know and I would rather that the information get to us all together than if it's in pieces.
I approve.
And I would ask that, that Sandra, you know, as soon as she can, get with the other asset team members and get a, and try to, try to figure out a quick process to get this information to us. But asset is a funding team and it's, I think, best if we move together forward as a team. But I think, I would think Supervisor Olson is right, we need to move quickly.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of questions that I will give to you just regarding the Bridge and what they're doing now and the utilization of the structure they have. But I'll, I'll, you know, I'll let you know those.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I would have to make the assumption too that there may be some other organizations that may need a contract change as well on how they're drawing down those funds. And maybe not, maybe they figured out a way to virtually do, you know, do it and be able to still bill, but there may be some that don't. I think that was part of your survey here and that's probably why you didn't get more is some of them have probably said, okay, we've kind of figured this out. But maybe just trying to be, again, that's where I say the midterm reports really kind of show that, but maybe it's something else. I'm not sure if that's too long to get that information or, or, you know, because I know it comes in, I'm not sure when you all review all of that. So it may be something to say, okay, we need to send out a-
And, and the other thing, and I think it's implied by what you said, is, is that this isn't, you know, we won't just have one more pass at this and that's going to be it.
Right.
This is going to be an ongoing thing so we can, if more comes in later, as long as we're keeping track, you know, so far we just granted flexibility, but if we're granting funding, you know, we'll have to look at, you know, keep good track of that, any additional funds. But, but it can be a multi, you know, it, it doesn't have to be, you have to give us something by December 15th and that's it and then you've lost your-
Right.
-lost your opportunity.
Yeah. I have to- Because some of the agencies, they don't know and they're going to know, they might, they might know by December, they might know by February where things are at. They may have the funds where they're able to pull from the other entities, you know, they, they might have to pull from like Iowa State first or something, just depending on how they, how they do their drawdown. It might show something a little bit later.
I do understand. So I appreciate you guys acknowledging that, you know, that, that, you know, there, there are a couple needs that are pretty immediate here and it sounds like a good plan and yes, and we had no idea, you know, fortunately Jody had, in communicating on another issue had indicated some of this.
And I have a little bit of information that I can share about the challenge, but I'll be bringing forward in detail next month.
Why don't we just do it all at one time? Is that okay?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, so do you feel like you have sufficient direction?
To discuss with the admin team.
Yes.
Go back for additional proposals from the asset agencies who want to request additional funding.
Yes.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously they're going to know that there's no guarantee, but we're just wondering what their need is.
Right.
Because it's hard for us to make a determination without that.
Exactly.
Clear needs spelled out in the proposals.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm very much interested in, you know, why, if, if, if an agency is out of money now, why? You know, to explain, you know, what's happened and what are the consequences if not bringing forward.
Yeah, we can infer why, but it's nice to hear directly.
Well, no, just, I want to use those two examples, homelessness versus the food pantries. One's got a labor issue, the other has a, we have an alternate housing money issue.
Okay.
Thank you, Sandra. I appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to consideration of entering into a 28E agreement with the City of St. Joyce City for grading and paving of Timberland Drive. And Darren Moon, engineer, are you on the phone? And I don't know if Anthony Anderson from the county attorney's office has joined us or not. Just a second. I'm out of my phone, but I can send him a quick email. Would you call Sandra or Alyssa? Can one of you call Darren right now? That might be faster. He might have thought we would take longer to get to him.
Do you want to do the audit report while we're leaving? Yeah, yeah. Poor Lisa Markley was hung in there. We get to-
Lisa, are you, Lisa Markley, are you on the, on the call? Are you on?
I'm here.
Hey, why don't you go ahead and give your report, your FY21 report.
Finally, really? Oh, that's awesome.
I'm just teasing. Go ahead and do it.
I know. Hey, you know, election got in the way for me to get there in October and then November's been long. So anyway, I have provided the September 30th, 2020 FY21 quarterly financial report, 25% of the year. We're, you know, just a few short weeks away from the December one, so, you know, you'll get to see me, hear me again. As of September 30th, we only had four departments that were over 25% in expenses. If you look at the first page, we did amend in the rest of the, or we did do an amendment and will probably be doing another one shortly, I would assume. The fund balances, as you can see from the bottom, were- Uh, the fund balances, as you can see from the bottom, were, we spent 19% of the general fund. Uh, that's awesome. Uh, 22% of supplemental, obviously our insurance is due right off the bat. Uh, mental health, we haven't spent hardly any because that one's not going to be probably spent, well, we discussed billing, uh, twice a year. I don't, I have not billed out anything for CICS yet for the CICS portion, uh, but 50% of that may go away here in the next month or so. Uh, rural services, we've only spent 13% of our, um, balance, fund balance and secondary roads have spent 18%. For revenues, we had, um, six departments that were over the 25%. As you can see, countywide, which is where we collect our taxes, and as Ted had, had been saying at the end of September, we had, um, we hadn't collected 50% quite yet. We were at 52.58 on countywide. Uh, since that point in time, we have gone over the 50%. Any questions for me?
None. No questions. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll see you in a, in a month or so when it comes to needing to, uh, do the 1231 financial report. Thanks, guys.
Sandra, whoever called, is Darren available?
Uh, he's been handed. Right. Wait, but I think they must have assumed it's going to be on consent because.
They put their names behind it so it goes under additional items.
Yeah, that's my fault.
She always knows the rules. Yeah. Okay.
So Darren?
Yes. Good. Can you hear me?
Yes. Um, I guess we just heard that you thought maybe this was going to be on consent, consent and it isn't. So can you go just a brief summary?
Sure. Yeah. I'm sorry about that. I didn't know this was on for discussion. Um, yes, what's going on is, uh, the Story City Timberland paving projects did not get 100% completed. Uh, they got one left of asphalt down. They need to come back in the spring and finish it up with another lift. And our original agreement, uh, turned the maintenance over, the jurisdiction and maintenance over to the city once the project was done. We weren't anticipating it being split to the winter, so we had no plans to do winter maintenance because once you pave a road, it takes the additional snow and ice control, uh, maintenance work that we weren't planning on doing. And with the project half completed, there's some liability concerns and, um, the thickness of the asphalt, uh, whether it holds up over the winter. It should, but we don't know. There was just enough concerns there that we, we wanted to turn this over to the city because that's really what was planned in the first place, for them to take over the maintenance once it became a paved road. It's essentially a paved road now. It's just not quite complete. So that's the intention of this, is to turn it over jurisdiction-wise, completely to the city at this point instead of wait until the project's completely finalized.
I assume you've been working with the city of Story City on this and they understand why we're doing this?
Correct. I saw an email from Ethan to the city that, uh, it sounded like, uh, Mark Jackson said he was okay with it.
Okay. Any questions for Darren?
None.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for approval of the 2080 agreement.
So moved. Second.
Olson.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
So next we'll go to, uh, we have department reports on the agenda, but there are nuns. We'll go to upcoming agenda items. Do we have any things that we want to suggest for the next meeting or so?
I think so. There may be something that Sandra will be bringing forward, whether it be next week or within the next couple of weeks, but, but maybe.
There will be, there will be amended for the contract.
Okay. When will we see that?
Um, I haven't gotten that date. I think the board needs.
We meet, the board meets on December 3rd. So I guess it wouldn't be then not the first, but the, the week after that. And it's just a setting kind of a dollar amount about how much would go for City of Ames trips and then a reevaluation in March, but rather, you know, so that you guys can kind of keep at the top of that and look at any other issues you've got with the changeover. Obviously a new representative on the Herta board and a new supervisor, so.
Okay. I, um, just a second. I want to check what date that, what would be looking at there.
Well, the first, the 8th, then December 8th again.
Um, okay. Anything, any other things that are upcoming that people can think of that will go on agendas? And, and the reason I ask is I've, I've, I, I may be zooming in on the 22nd and the 29th of December. I'll, I'll be around, but I may be zooming in rather than being here in person. Do we usually have limited agendas on one of the other of those?
You guys never, you guys said.
They haven't said so.
And so I never put anything on the agenda except for the organizational will be on Monday instead of Tuesday.
January 4th.
Right.
Yes. I'm working on that.
We have.
Okay. So we probably will have some slower meetings and they don't necessarily have to be limited agendas at this point because I, I will be available by June. Okay. And, um, anything else done?
For agenda?
Yeah. For agenda. Okay. Then I'll go on to public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Are there any members of the public who would like to open the public forum? Any members of the public who would like to make a comment? Please, uh, raise your hand and mute yourself or you start on, on your phone. Seeing no one, I'll close the public forum and we'll talk about liaison assignments, committee meetings, updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Hens, would you like to start?
Uh, sure. I mean, I just, uh, this week, uh, just have this meeting and some other things just within the office. I don't have any additional meetings. Uh, number about moved back to last week because of the Thanksgiving holiday, um, this week. So kind of slow meeting wise this week.
Supervisor Olson?
Um, tonight there's an Ames Area Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting. I already notified them I wouldn't be there. It's a pretty straightforward, they're revising the transportation improvement plan. They're going to take advantage of a federal grant. Uh, it'll be about $500,000 and it will, uh, start tracking the number of people riding each bus electronically so that riders can tell, especially this is important for the student population, or they're taking the routes into campus and out of campus about how full a bus is. So it really, uh, you know, the only quasi-issue is there's 72 or 74,000 dollars of match money that CyRide will be kicking in, which takes us back to the situation with Herta. Uh, the city probably need, the city is going to have to start thinking about what are they going to do about, um, uh, supplementing those Ames rides since we're now in essence covering the cost. Okay? But this is money that I don't think CyRide would be able to move into Dyloride anyway. So it's a pretty cut and dried thing. I thought I'd tell you that. The other thing, just to make you aware of, when I was going through the agenda and I read the minutes from the last one, is that there is an effort out there, uh, led by the Friends of Ames Hayden, uh, Heritage Park to go ahead and purchase Rose Prairie of the 100 Centaby Acres, um, uh, that were, were to be Rose Prairie Development and its various, you know, various contexts. So the staff has done a report and, um, the staff is not recommending it. Um, a combination of the purchase price, the land that's already, the amount of money that the city has already put in with infrastructure running out there in anticipation of there being housing up there. The fact that the studies have already been done and the proposed housing project that apparently the developer is once again wanting to move forward with. And no, I don't know who the current developer is. I called and they were all in a meeting and planning their own things. But the, uh, just to let you know of that, you may be wanting to watch that as the Urban Fringe Plan moves forward, uh, to see how that ends up.
Yeah.
Staff report says developers now wants to move in 2021. The amount to purchase, uh, even would be $3.8 million, uh, that they wanted the city to bond for.
It's 170 acres, isn't it?
It's 170 acres and the, there were four scenarios that the staff looked at related to water quality. I mean, you know, because that is the reason Friends of Ames Hayden are pushing for this is they want to, uh, get a, a regional type park of 40, 60 acres and the rest of it for more, you know, water quality protection. But the development plans that, and the overlay zoning that's already been placed for in anticipation of a development over there, oh, about 680 units total mixed of single family, extended duplex, maybe a couple of multi-residential, already would be an improvement over how the land's being used now, which is for eggs.
Has all the bananas?
Uh?
I don't know if it's all bananas. Don't there still some holdouts there?
There might be. And they, you should go read the report. It's on, it's attached to their agenda packet.
I will.
I just, I want to make you aware of this, that.
Yeah.
This is, is happened, that like I said, the staff, I believe their recommendation tonight is to, no, you know, don't do it. We're not going to go ahead and, and make an offer to buy the land, but I think it'll be significant for you guys moving forward. So as you head into, that's it for me.
Okay. I don't think I have anything else this week. No. This week is basically tomorrow at this point.
Yeah.
Okay. Nope. I don't have anything. Um, any other issues? If not, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Olson.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.